All right, everyone. Today is November 7th, 2023. It's 2:38 PM. Again, I apologize for the delay of getting this started. This is a city council voting meeting, and I'm calling this to order. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
All right. This agenda for this meeting is to discuss possible action and discussion regarding complaints made by city council members related to the conduct of the mayor. Before we proceed, I'm going to read a statement into the record. Since this meeting has been called at the request of three members of this council to discuss my actions as your duly elected and reelected mayor, I will make this opening statement for the record before we proceed. I have always held myself to the highest ethical standards of conduct in my personal life, in my professional career, and during the eight years that I have served this city, first as the co-chairman of the Sober Living Homes Committee, then as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, followed by four years as the city councilman, and the last two years as your mayor. I've never violated my oath of office while serving this city, nor while serving this great country in combat during a time of war. I have diligently adhered to the terms of our city charter and have created an ad hoc committee to review and recommend amendments to the city charter in order to clarify and clearly define the provisions under which we operate as a charter city. I made open, transparent city government, a key issue in my campaign for mayor, and I have delivered on this promise by creating an open call to the public at our council meetings and to encourage and accept public comment on our voting issues as much as possible. I've also allowed reasonable latitude of comments from our council members while openly debating and discussing those issues during our council meetings. The legitimacy of these numerous claims now lodged against me are baseless, inflammatory, false, and deceptive. Some of these charges are based on hearsay and are simply inaccurate and wildly exaggerated. A clear understanding and review of our city charter, the Arizona Revised Statutes Regarding Open Meeting Law, and our council's rules of procedure demonstrate that regardless of what these -- demonstrate that regardless of what these council members allege. And they are also subject to our city government to unwarrant -- they subject our city government to unwarranted criticism and create mistrust in our citizens. As a consequence, last week I directed our city attorney to retain an independent outside agency to review and investigate these charges and claims. So I will not be responding to any of those charges, outrageous or otherwise, until this investigation has been completed. I also understand that a complaint of open meeting law violations have been submitted to the Arizona Attorney General's Office, and I have not been informed of the acceptance of those complaints. And if an investigation of those allegations is commenced, then the results of such an investigation needs to be completed as well. Consequently, I would advise these council members to discontinue this rancorous political public circus until we can fully understand whether any of these charges are justified, at which time we can take appropriate actions, if any. With that said, we'll now proceed. I've -- All right. Let's keep the -- let's keep the activities here in decorum and good order. I think considering the issues on this agenda, I'm going to allow each council member five minutes to make their statements if they choose. That will give us about a half an hour, 35 minutes or so, and then I'll take a public comment, both in support and in opposition, so that we can have a reasonably open and transparent meeting. So with that said, I will start with whoever wants to speak first. I'm looking at the agenda here, and I don't see speakers. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I will say that I agree that an investigation needs to be done. I think it needs to be an open and transparent investigation, and I think that I have had contact with the Attorney General's Office, and they've indicated that there is an investigation that is being started with relation to the open meeting law complaints. I think that, as I see it, one of the things we need to consider is referring most of the complaints that are listed out in Councilman Moore's complaint, and mine as well, to the Attorney General's Office to do an investigation. And that's what I have to say.
I'll entertain any of the other council members' willingness to make a statement or in support or opposition or any otherwise. Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. This Monday morning of this week, I joined Councilman Moore and Mayor Protem Montoya in filing a formal letter of complaint regarding the mayor's actions. I won't read the entirety of that letter here.
Come up, please.
I won't read the entirety of that letter here, but I will read the first couple of paragraphs and then make a couple of quick comments. City Attorney Young is a member of the Prescott City Council who has become aware of an elected official's violation of both the city charter and state open meeting law. I feel an ethical obligation to join other council members in filing a formal complaint with your office. I want to make clear that although this complaint is in reference to the recent actions of Mayor Feelgood, I do not file this complaint because of any animosity or lack of personal respect for the mayor. Rather, I seek to highlight and hopefully curtail a pattern wherein members of the city council have forgotten that ours is a legislative policymaking body and not an executive body of government. The city of Prescott has seen high turnover in the past two years from a number of key leaders among our professional staff. I believe this is due in part to elected officials continually overstepping our legal roles and attempting to interfere with the roles of the city's professional staff. I am confident that an anonymous survey of remaining professional city staff would confirm this. I am filing this complaint because I care deeply about the future of my hometown of 40 years. I do not want to see us further become a city where experienced professionals are reluctant to work. I'm confident that members of the public have had an opportunity to see the letters of complaint filed by Councilman Montoya and Councilman Moore, and my own letter of complaint largely parallels those complaints that after dismissing our city airport director, that our city manager was asked by one member of our council to resign. That's outside of the legal obligations and responsibilities of that member of our council. And there are a number of other issues regarding that that have been outlined in the letters of complaint, and I'm glad to hear there'll be a full investigation. If it turns out that independent parties determine there's no wrongdoing, fantastic. If independent parties determine there was wrongdoing, I'm hopeful that at minimum we will not have a repeat of this type of action on the city level.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I too put in a letter of complaint to join Councilman Tenney, Councilman Moore, and Councilman Montoya. But I'm going to approach this a little different. I think it needs to be said. For too long, we've looked at our mayors almost like kings, and more like -- more like them actually started -- and they actually started to believe this, especially when it came to crossing the line and intimidating and bullying the city manager, contrary to decency and the charter. I thought we got rid of kings centuries ago because of their abuses. The mayor should be the face of the city and not the king of the city. We need to bring Prescott and our mayors back to reality. That's why we're having this meeting. We need a mayor a little closer to Harvey Skoug and a whole lot farther away from Napoleon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Moore.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I want to begin by saying that there's nothing personal about the letter that I filed of complaint. It was based on behaviors and actions, not on my like or dislike of the mayor. I've never disliked the mayor. I do not dislike the mayor. But I was very concerned after the meeting that we had where we were supposed to review the employment of our city manager, and the meeting was taking a different course, and I felt like that meeting was a sham and it was inappropriate. And I think the basis for my letter of complaint is several factors that I'd like to bring up. As elected officials, we have all taken a loyalty oath that we will support and sustain the Constitution of the United States, of the state of Arizona, and that includes our adherence to articles in the charter which dictate the rules and regulations governing city council members as well as the city manager. And I felt like the mayor overstepped his bounds and violated the city charter in taking upon himself administrative duties, which he cannot do in and of himself, that as a decision that has to be made by the council, not by one individual of the council. And so that was the primary basis for my letter of complaint. I think it's very important, as Councilman Tenney mentioned, that we need to remember that we are a legislative body. We are not an administrative body, and that we have, according to our charter, which is granted to us by the state of Arizona Constitution, a council and manager form of government, and we need to adhere to that form of government. We do not have administrative duties as elected officials. That is very clear in the charter. The person that has administrative duties is our city manager, who we hired. I think, you know, it's interesting how every meeting that we have, we start our regular council meetings, we didn't today, but we start our regular council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And one of the things we cite in that Pledge of Allegiance is justice for all. And it's not justice when one person demands another person resign, when that person doesn't have the authority to demand that resignation. That's not justice. That's either revenge or, you know, not feeling that you're getting your way. And so I just want to be clear why I filed a letter of complaint. And I do hope that a thorough independent investigation will determine whether there were any violations or not, but I felt as an elected official, I have sworn a loyalty oath, and I'm going to adhere to that loyalty oath and do my duty as an elected official. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
You know, this is a very, very difficult thing, I have to say. I've been on this council for a little bit, more than a year, and I just want to remind the council members that all council members are expected to conduct themselves in a mutually respectful and professional manner and refrain from engaging in any inappropriate workplace conduct. Inappropriate workplace conduct means any disrespectful, harassing, unwelcome, unwanted, or inappropriate conduct towards other council members. As a guideline, the city -- this is right out of the city handbook, by the way. You're supposed to act with integrity, work as a team, have personal commitment and loyalty, solve problems, take pride in excellent results, perform at a high level of productivity, and when all else fails, just be nice. I've been on here a year and a few months, and this is the second attempt to take out our mayor. And I want to remind everybody, especially the people sitting on this dais here, we just came through an election. Did you know that this mayor received 97.10% of the vote? The message that this mayor and some of the rest of us ran on resonated with the voters. Some people may not like it, but you know what? There's going to come a point where we have to agree to disagree on some things, and that's what it means when you grow up. But you have a duty to represent this city, and what I've been seeing lately with the conduct from some of the other members is so unprofessional, I'm just shocked. As far as the accusations towards the mayor, I wasn't in the room, but neither were they. There's a lot of things that's been bantered around. Nobody has any proof. I think it would be -- you'd be well advised to wait for this investigation to come through and lodge those findings before you say anything else. And I'm in complete support of this mayor. You have to have -- you don't run for this office if you do not like the position of authority, and if you can't handle the authority, then you shouldn't be running for this office. That comes with a responsibility for all of us to just remember that. I'm going to wait, before I say anything else, until this investigation is done. Thank you.
We'll have order, please. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cantelme. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by reading Section 6, 6 from Article 2 of the city charter, Duties of the Mayor. The mayor shall be the chairman of the council and preside over its deliberations. He may make and second motions and shall have a voice and vote in all the proceedings. He shall be a chief executive of the city government for all purposes and recognized by the governor for purposes of military law and civil defense, and shall have executive, but no regular administrative duties. I now want to read a statement. There are two sides to every story. Please hear me out. On Tuesday, October 31st, on KYCA 1490 AM, Mayor Protem Montoya misstated that it was me that announced the airport director had been fired. In fact, it was the city manager that stated she is no longer employed by the city. I then asked, "She's been fired?" And the city manager did not correct me. The Mayor Protem then goes on to accuse me on the radio of violating open meeting laws --
If I may.
-- executive sessions and confidentiality, and that he was --
City Attorney.
I just want to make sure that we're not getting into other employee conduct at this hearing. It hasn't been noticed.
Yeah, that's all right. We're talking about my behavior and the charges leveled against me. So let's keep it to that topic.
Okay. What I wanted to say is this is directly related to an incident involving the city manager in my office that took place between the executive session and the study session a week before on Council Day, October 24th. This incident was so egregious that it caused the mayor to ask for the city manager's resignation.
Can you bring it back to the situation between what my activity or actions were and the complaints alleged against me?
On November 1st, I filed a complaint with HR under Section 5, DAP.15.
Mayor, she's not following your direction.
In summary, this meeting today is an effort to circumvent the mayor's right to due process under the law. Isn't he innocent until found guilty? Also, this is nothing but a smear campaign ironically carried out by two council members who were themselves smeared. I ask you, who will benefit from this? The Mayor Protem, and ultimately, as usual, the developers. Finally, I support Dr. Sapata 100%. Lastly, I welcome speaking to the AG's office. Maybe it's time they come to Prescott and start asking some questions. Thank you.
That completes the council's members' opportunity to make their statements. So we will take public comment, and if you want to address the council on these issues, please submit one of those blue cards to the city clerk.
Thank you, Sarah. I've never been first before in my life. Mr. Mayor, city council, and residents, my name is Ted Gamboji. I live at 1896 Forest View, Prescott, Arizona 86305. One of my heroes is a guy named Stephen Covey, and in one of his habits, he says, "Begin with the end in mind." Now, the end that started this conversation was to resolve the issues at the airport, and somehow that quickly devolved into an issue between the city manager and the airport director. And now it's further devolved into a catfight between some of our council members and other council members. I think it's important that we understand we got to stop the gaslighting. We can't conflate Article 3, Section 6 with Article 2, Section 19. And I implore you to get back to the city's business. Stop this witch hunt and resolve the issues at the airport. Thank you very much.
Please, we'll have order in the chambers here, and I ask your cooperation for decorum and civility. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Hutchinson. I live at 631st Street here in Prescott. Some of you may know me from my last four years as a planning and zoning commissioner. Just a little bit of my background. I'm a retired Ford Motor Company engineering executive. I've lived in Europe and Asia. I've managed very, very big globally dispersed teams, and I've asked people for their resignation. And I think that's important, that we understand that we have a feel for what's really going on here. And to me, this reeks of having a lot of missing information, and that missing information clearly has to take the form of some kind of a informal or very formal, excuse me, and deliberate investigation. But I have a few questions, a few things that are bothering me, and I have reviewed Councilman Moore's complaint in depth, and I got to ask you, who helped you write that? I'd like a proper noun, please.
City Attorney, is he allowed to answer that?
He's allowed to answer that. He doesn't have to.
I wrote it totally independently by myself. Nobody helped me. I had my wife proofread it before I submitted it, but I wrote it completely independently by myself.
Do you have any legal training?
Do not, sir.
Okay, thank you.
In response to your question, I took the time and effort to study the city charter and to study the Arizona Revised Statutes and to thoroughly try to grasp those, the meaning of the statutes and the charter, and I wrote my opinion based on my interpretation of those documents, but it was completely done by myself at home. Nobody helped me.
After I reviewed it, I in fact shared this with my wife, who's a retired attorney, and she believes also that there was some help in writing that, and that some of the citations are not accurate. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. The other thing I keep wondering is, what was the intent of Mayor Good's asking for Katie Gregory's resignation? Was he trying to protect the city? Was there something going on there that we needed to know about, that he needed to know about? What was the intent?
I don't think we can answer that question.
I wonder that. Were you in fact trying to protect the city from some other bigger problem?
I always take my responsibilities to protect the city as a primary goal, and that's what I have done and what I will continue to do.
Thank you. So we don't know what's going to happen here, but I think that my recommendation would be that in the best interest of all of us in this room, to wait until all the facts have surfaced, and in fact, we can then decide how to proceed with a course of action. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I didn't mention this before, but I'll try to limit the time for these comments to no more than four minutes, which all of you so far have fortunately complied with.
I guess I just have a couple comments. I haven't followed all of this. I haven't been to that many of the meetings, but I did read the article in the paper on Sunday, and I thought it was a lot of promotion for yourself. I thought, in just reading it, I thought, that's really a very interesting article, and I thought, it's a lot of self-promotion. That was my humble opinion. But I'm like, just sitting watching this, I'm like, I'm annoyed as a taxpayer in Prescott and annoyed as a state taxpayer that we feel that we have to go to the state attorney general, which we're all going to pay for this, to investigate this. I'm like, let's sit down and work this out and act like grownups, because this seems to be a little lacking in the council today. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Mayor, council members, people, men, women, all of you. An interesting observation between the --
Please state your name, please.
Oh, of course, yes. I'm Peggy Glenn. I live in Prescott. An interesting observation between this meeting and the last meeting is that some of you have indeed learned to protect your voice and speak closer to your microphone so that the people at the back of the room can hear you. I appreciate that. I'm sitting right up front, and I'm wearing my hearing aids, and right about now, my husband's going to find out I've had them for a year. Frankly, it was none of his business whether I could hear him or not, but he's an amazing person. I digress. Interestingly, that bit of decorum break was allowed. Another interesting observation on decorum is that if people clap and support Position A, they're allowed to do so, you don't hear the Position B, people even speak up out of respect. They don't clap, they don't carry on, they don't boo when the others are clapping. You're not hearing that, but please pay attention. You're not hearing that, but please pay attention to it. I'd like to remind you that this is 2023. This is not Buffalo Bill days. This is not Wild West days. This is not show up in a cowboy hat and run the business as if it's your own. It's not. It's seven people representing close to half a million people, if I'm not mistaken. Am I close? Quarter million people? Eighth of a million people? 150,000, roughly? I mean, you're building so dang fast, and you're building luxury, luxury, luxury. I don't know where you're going to put regular people to live. There's a huge contrast between Councilmember Cantelme's statement and Councilmember Rusing's statement and Mayor Good's statement, which reference emotional aspects and being a grownup and not having a grudge versus Councilmember Tenny's, Mayor Pro Tem Montoya's, Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Siska. And it's Siska, not Shiska, right? It is Shiska? Sis-Siska. The S-H is at the second syllable. Yeah, I got that. There's a big disparagement. So which one are we supposed to believe in a time when we're supposed to be looking at facts? Are we supposed to get all upset about the emotion, or are we supposed to stick to the facts? In terms of the mayororal vote, if you look at the numbers, he didn't get every vote. Absolutely did not get every vote from every person voting, even though there was only one person on the ballot. There's an awful lot missing in the stuff that's gone back and forth. And I think for that reason alone, this investigation belongs in the hands of an independent, much-removed investigative body, not attorneys that you would be hired and responsive to the city council. It belongs in the hands of the state attorney general. That's what procedure is for. That's what command, what do you call it? Line of command is all about, whether it's the fire department and the way they work an incident, or the federal government and the way they work something. This belongs in the hands of the attorney general. Thank you for your time.
Paul Roberto Sierra.
Hi, that is my legal name, but you can all call me Bert. I go by Bert. I would invite any of you to comment on anything you find incorrect in what I'll say. I'm going, speaking extemporaneously. Somebody raised my hand when I've gone to 3 minutes and 30 seconds.
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a mic thing. I'm also a retired sound guy, and I should know dynamic mics need close miking. I've been watching from afar for quite a while, primarily because of my interest in the October 24th meeting, which was primarily about LGBTQ issues, which I won't bring up here other than to mention those very important letters. I'm not a member of the community, but I was very concerned with what appeared to be some private things going on. Rumors were occurring that in that executive meeting, and correct me if I'm mixing up my executive meetings, there was some scuttlebutt coming out that something was going on involving the airport manager, who should be addressed as doctor, I've forgotten her name, doctor, PhD, as you would like me, mayor, or council, Mayor Pro Tem, or councilman, or city attorney to give you titles. I'm just Bert. I'm very concerned by the fact that what should have been solved or addressed within executive session has now blown out into the public forum. I don't appreciate ad hominem attacks, usually because I'm the recipient of such attacks for being seriously mentally ill, a designation which applies to 3.5% of the population. I appreciate Councilman Rusing for reading the article. I think also Mayor Pro Tem Montoya summarized it in this way in one of his online appearances, either by radio or Prescott Times. He said that the body here is like a board of managers within a company, and I think that makes it more explainable to everybody behind me, who I hope is more business-oriented than I am. As such, you make long-term decisions for how the city should go. You are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Rusing, or Councilwoman Rusing, I apologize. It is not within the purview of the mayor or any council member to interfere, let's say, with city management administrative duties. The key word is administrative. Would you not agree? That's in that thing. And I agree that, I think therefore, you guys agree on a point. I just want to say that this body should not be involved in those things. A big thing, and I thank my slightly hard-of-hearing fellow, I think his name was Tim, who said that there's a lot that the public don't know, and we appreciate the fact that you can't say what occurred in the executive meetings. But this is where, and I'm addressing you, Mayor Good, you should view the participation of the attorney general's office as an audit, not anything to suggest criminal behavior. I'm very concerned that, Councilman Moore, I haven't read your complaint in full. I'm pseudo-journalistic in nature, so therefore, the attorney general won't return calls. They don't see me as media. I'm trying to get those complaints. If anyone would like to supply them to me, there are Xerox machines downstairs, and I would like to get those copies. Where am I on the time? I should probably close. What I'm concerned--
You're right, at 3:30.
Wow. Wow, cognizance. In any case, I'm very concerned that this is now blowing over into very emotional, and Ms. Cantelme, I'm sorry, ad hominem would be the basis of your attacks. It's a very good Latin phrase to learn. Argue the facts, not the personalities. And that's really all I wanted to say. I love you all, and I'll go shut up now.
Tony Hamer.
And I will mention, Ms. Lynn, that I heard you from the last meeting, and they turned up the volume on my microphone. So thank you.
I'm sorry. One last thought. Y'all need to get higher chairs. I don't know if you need to have a meeting for it. I'm sitting in the front row, and I'm only now just discovering you have actual bodies attached. I'm being quite serious.
Tony Hamer, nice to see everybody again, but not under this circumstance, really. I live here in Prescott, 801 down a trail. Boys and girls, you need to come together, and I'm using Ted's phrase on this. Where's Ted? You really need to listen to Ted on this. We have so many crises within the city that this is becoming a sideshow and is taking away your time from spending time on the crises we have in the city, whether it be the airport, whether it be the budget, whether it be personnel. You have the obligation to the citizens here to work together as a team to resolve those issues and move us forward. Please do that. This is a little bit of growing up, and that's already been mentioned. Boys and girls, you need to grow up and take on the adult responsibilities for this city before we find ourselves in real trouble. Thank you.
Suzette Conrady.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzette Conrady. I live at 3067 Pedregal Drive in Prescott. I'd like to start out by saying that this should have been handled by internal processes, and it should never have been launched into the court of public opinion by the mayor pro tem. Having said that, and not having too many facts at my disposal yet, I do believe the accusations against Mayor Good are spurious and conveniently timed in an attempt to oust him from office right before a new council is sworn in, one that is likely to give the mayor a majority on council, specifically with respect to his managed growth agenda. We've seen things like this happen before, and now they're happening again. We should not be surprised. If you ask yourself, who benefits, which is what I always ask in any situation, who benefits from this? If Mayor Good were to be ousted, it's the pro-growth council members that we thought we had gotten rid of, and the developers. And I honestly suspect they are trying to do an end run around the voters' wishes. Mayor Good has called for an investigation into the charges, and that should be completed before any action or any vote is taken. If any one of the council members hesitate to support this, then I, along with the public, can and may conclude that you're not acting in good faith. Thank you.
Robin Sabata.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Robin Sabata. I live at 1246 Seraphina Drive, Prescott. Can y'all hear me now? I am here in support of the mayor. Unlike the council members who filed the complaints, I was in the room when some of the events occurred. I am ready to meet with investigators and to discuss all items for which I was a witness. Concurrently, I am taking steps within appropriate channels to challenge a potentially interconnected employment matter. I would like to ensure that those confidential processes can take their course without the possibility of being adversely affected by comments made in this public forum. I look forward to the time when all these matters can be discussed freely, and I am truly grateful for all the community support that we've received during this very challenging time. Thank you.
Sorry, you probably couldn't hear me over the clapping.
Richard Thompson, now Prescott. Thank you, Dr. Swoboda, for talking. I just want to say that we all know Dr. Swoboda is a major asset, is a major asset, for the city of Prescott. What she has done for the airport, to bring the airport, is amazing. And I find it kind of interesting that Dr. Swoboda was able to work with two or three prior city managers, but for some reason, isn't able to work with this city manager. I would like to really understand how that happens. And as you said, the city manager is in charge of the city, but you're in charge of the city manager. You are voted elected officials. You're in charge of the city. You are in charge of our city, not the city manager. She handles the employment, but you're in charge. Take charge of the situation, protect our asset, and let's get this settled, and like as everyone says, act like adults and make this happen. Thank you.
Well, as you'll see from the agenda, this item was for discussion only. There's no specific recommendation, nor do I understand any possible action that can be taken today. So I appreciate everyone that came in.
Joe, can you speak to the specific action that might be considered?
If I may, mayor. It was noted for possible action, though the actions would be limited and essentially would be related to requests for investigations that you guys have been talking about.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Related to what?
To possible action regarding complaints by city council members related to the contact of the mayor. Are you recognizing me to make my motion?
I'm thinking about it. So, city attorney, if the only possible action is recommending an investigation, I think we've addressed that, but if your motion is to support that, then I'll listen to your motion.
My motion is to formally file these complaints with the attorney general's office.
A second. That's not under the responsibility of this body.
I'd like to hear from the city attorney on it.
City Attorney?
This is a broad question. Complaints can be directed by each individual to the attorney general's office. If it's to be directed through the city, I cannot do that. I cannot file on any of you potential wrongdoing. It would be based on direction of council to direct staff to file or to forward on complaints.
Well, I think complaints have already been filed by members of this council, so this motion is out of order.
You still have to vote on it, though, mayor, because you have a motion and a second.
I didn't hear a second.
Mayor, can I modify my motion?
All right, so let's see if you can modify this into an acceptable form.
Mayor, I would move to forward these complaints on to the attorney general's office through staff, specifically the HR department.
Is that a legally allowed process, city attorney?
I think that the motion would have to be to direct the city manager to forward it on, and she could use HR.
This is a little difficult to understand. If we're trying to do a completely independent investigation by an outside agency, then bringing the HR department and the city into this complaint process seems to be a contradiction in what we're trying to achieve. Can you respond to that, city attorney?
Yes, I think essentially what we're doing here is if you want to make this motion, it would be to have the AG's office look at it, if it were to come from the city. If it were to come from the city, it has to come through the management of the city. As I mentioned, I cannot forward these types of things to the city manager, not, or, excuse me, the attorney general, not as it relates to conduct of members of this council. I can direct a third-party independent investigator to do so, but I can't, and I won't forward it to the attorney general. So if that's the direction to forward to the attorney general, it can come from city management. Or we can do an independent investigation.
Well, we've got a motion, it's second on the floor, that I think is a legal motion. But as I said, I think this is going to compromise our ability to have a thorough, independent investigation look into this, since it will now include city staff and the city manager, which is part of the complaints that have been lodged. This makes it very difficult for us to have a conclusion here that we can all rely on as being independent and unbiased. But since you have a motion, it's second on the floor, and the city attorney has decided that this is a legal motion, then I'll ask for a vote.
Mayor, can I ask a clarification question of the city attorney before we vote?
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. Mr. Young, is it your opinion that if this council were to, a majority of this council were to vote for Mayor Pro Tem Montoya's motion, that it would compromise the ability to have the independent investigation that apparently is already going to be initiated?
They don't have anything to do, other than results could be questioned, and I don't know if that's the question, but if we have two separate investigations and the results look different, that could compromise the integrity of either.
Mayor, may I ask?
All right, Councilwoman Cantelme.
Joe, is it possible for me to make a second motion, that we withdraw the first motion?
No, under the rules of procedure, the first motion has to be dealt with, and then the second motion can be dealt with.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not comfortable voting on this agenda, or pardon me, on this yet, until I get more information from the city attorney, I think. So at the beginning of this meeting, mayor, you mentioned that you had requested that an independent investigation occur. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, city attorney, if an independent investigation has been requested, you would direct that to an outside source? You have the jurisdiction and the authority to do that?
As far as complaints relate, that relate to members of council or the city manager, I would-- members of council or the city manager, I would forward those to a third party.
But you don't have the authority to forward, for example, my letter of complaint to the attorney general's office?
It's not so much about authority. You're my client. The mayor's my client. I can't refer to a prosecuting agency based on my ethical rules, potential violations. It would have to come from each of you or from the city as directed by you.
So I guess I'm trying to have a line of questions so that I can make the most appropriate vote for what has been proposed. And I'm trying to think this through before I can vote. If there is an independent investigation, is there any value in having an independent investigation versus the attorney general? Is there one method that's better than another? Can you answer that question, even though you're representing us as your client?
Whether one's better or not depends on how you view it. There are differences. An independent investigation will result in a report that comes to me that I would share with council. It's something that goes to the attorney general, then rests in their discretion in how they handle it or don't handle it. If there were to be, and I don't want to imply anything by saying this, but if there were to be some sort of prosecution or something, that would be in the hands of the attorney general rather than within my discretion or discretion of this council.
If the attorney, pardon me, if the independent investigator report would recommend prosecution, then, but it didn't go through the attorney general's office, so how does that handle? I'm still trying to understand the process.
An independent investigation comes to my office. It's attorney-client privilege. I share it with council. Council would have to then vote to waive the attorney-client privilege and send it along for prosecution if it was recommended.
Mayor, for the sake of the process and the sanity of everyone here in the room, I withdraw my second.
You withdraw.
I'll withdraw my motion then.[1773.53][1773.53](APPLAUSE).
Well, apparently that solves our dilemma here.[1782.15][1782.15](LAUGHTER). So at this point, no further action being taken. Then I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming.[1790.88][1790.88](APPLAUSE).[1791.88]